Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America. In this new republic on which stands one nation under God and in this world where we need justice for all.
Jay will do attendance. The meeting tonight is, there's some board members online and there's some board members in the room, so all votes will be vocals.
All right, let's do attendance, just so we're good. Wendy?
Here.
Kristin?
Here.
David G.
Here.
Annie?
Here.
Oh, nice. Tyler?
Here.
Excellent. Christine told us she wouldn't be able to attend. Leslie?
Yeah.
Patricia?
Here.
Rebecca, is she online?
Here.
Awesome. Sean?
Yep.
Brian?
Yep.
Kelty? Not yet. David T had told us he would be absent. Abigail?
Here.
Ann Wyatt?
Here.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, well, good evening and thank you all for coming tonight. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone of our agreed-upon core values of integrity, perseverance, family respect, collaboration, and trust. These values support our mission of being a caring school community dedicated to excellence and our vision of being a safe and dynamic community where people of all ages will think, aspire, and participate as reasonable citizens in an ever-changing global society. This meeting, as I said, is being held in person at Zoom. Just ask that during the Citizens' Comments period of public participation, people are respectful and we don't talk about personnel issues, you know, people by name and things like that. And if you're online and you want to participate, just raise your hand and Diane will, during the public comment period, which is number three on the agenda, raise your online hand and Diane will bring you in. And there's here for public comment in the room, but if someone comes in, we'll keep you on the clipboard. First things up is Citizens' Comments. So, do we have anybody online, Diane? Okay, so no Citizens' Comments online. We will now go to number four for additions, adjustments to the agenda by the Board or the Superintendent.
So I have two to start with. The first one I'd like to add as number, what, make sure I say the right number, number six, C, Acceptance of Resignation of Middle School Teacher Mary Freeman. And that is in your folders, her letter's in your folders. And unfortunately, I have also a D that involves the acceptance of resignation of middle school teacher Mary Gerhart. Here, I hope I'm pronouncing her name right. So two resignations, both at the middle school. C would be Mary Freeman and D would be Mary Gerhart.
Is C middle school as well?
Yes, both middle school. And again, they're both, both of the letters of resignation are in the folders. And that would be it.
Anyone else, Leslie?
Do two things that have recently come to me, and if there's no preparation, being able to discuss some of it tonight, I understand. First would be around communication protocol for school lockdowns. And the second has to do with technology fees and student access to technology.
What was the second one, sorry?
It was technology fees and sort of that pairing with some student access to curriculum and the technology facets of curriculum.
All right, when it comes to those two, Jay, are you wanting to talk about any of these tonight, or can we get them on the next, I don't want to put anyone on the spot.
Same.
Yeah, no, if it's okay, I can have those ready for the next meeting in October, if that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah. That would be easier, I just, I'm not prepared at this point, so.
Is that, all right, we'll have those on the next. Thank you, anybody else? All right, seeing nothing else, we will move on to number five, Presentation, the NUIA report.
So Dr. Smith has got a report, it's not really a report, it's more of a general update, just so you guys know, but it's in your folders if you guys want to take a quick look at it. And Dr. Smith, I'll turn it over to you at that point, so.
Can't hear you.
I can't hear you.
Sorry, Rock.
Thank you. So it's, it's no new information from the, from the June 1st meeting, where I presented the new information from the 22-23 school year. We were waiting for the state New Through Assessment results and reports to come out, and we put it on this agenda, hoping that they would be available by now, and they still are not available. And we will be heading into the fall assessment window in a couple of weeks and likely will not have those results ready by that point. So I will come back in December, hopefully having the fall NUIA and also the state spring through assessment results available. I do just want to emphasize that last year, we cracked down on participation. The spring of '21, we had quite a dip in participation rates, and so we made some efforts around getting students to participate so that we meet the federal and state requirement of 95% or better, and so we did achieve that district-wide. As you can see, looking at, we like to look at achievement, but we also like to look at student growth. And we have, you know, achieved around 43% growth rate in math and reading. And really, we want to be around the 50%, okay? So we are not quite on the mark, and the district goals this year and the school goals are all centered around improving those growth rates. And when we look at achievement, we also are not quite where we want to be. We do a little bit better in literacy than we do in math. The math seems to have kind of, you know, been plateaued the last few testing windows, and so again, we're closely watching that as we have implemented and adopted new math programs to start seeing that, that impact. Again, December, I'm hoping to have more of a full report and hopefully get the state actual, you know, information on where we stand in our proficiency rates according to state and federal guidelines. Any questions? Yes.
With my own kids, how much time is allotted for math and English? Do they get a, just one class period, or can they take two class periods if they don't finish?
To, to take the, the?
Take the exam.
To take the assessment? Oh, so the math growth is about, the, the NUIA map growth, it's about 60 minutes on average for both assessments, so each, and, and?
So their time now?
No, 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 that it typically takes that a student to, to take the math or reading is about 60 minutes. The New Through Assessment that was first administered this spring, it's more like two and a half hours for each test.
And if the child doesn't finish, does the child get extra time, is what I'm asking at all?
So the, the schedule is set and, you know, the, the students are allowed to complete the, their testing within, you know, the region. I think they can sometimes hold a hold on it and then go back and continue to finish it up. So I don't think any student is ever cut off from, from completing their, their tests.
Oh, that's good to know.
Yeah.
I have another question.
Sure.
About five years ago, I was able to take a sample NUIA test, and that was amazing. And I understand when that was, we can't, adults can't have a sample, or, I mean, I learned so much taking that test as an adult, to see what the kids were dealing with. I was able to help my own children with the test because they had so many questions because I had the experience. Is there anything like that available for board members or parents who are interested? It was just a sampling of maybe five questions in each category, but I learned so much.
Yeah, they do have sample items that they release, and you can get those and make them available. They're on the main DOE website. The Through Assessment, I don't think they've released any items from that assessment yet, the New Through Assessment, but Math, the NUIA map does have, you know, released items that certainly could be geared.
Well, I'd love to get a link to some of the questions, if that's possible.
Yeah, and the DOE also has, like, there's, and the NUIA have training, like, they have videos, there's a lot of information out there that's available right to the public.
It's overwhelming, though.
Yep.
So it, I wouldn't mind if you could just post a link that you'd like. I would love to take a look at the NUIA, see what's going on.
Sure.
If that's possible.
Bless the board members. Yeah, that would be.
I'd love it.
Yeah.
That would be great.
I don't want to make more work for you.
Oh, no, it's not really, it's, it's just getting a couple links, it's not.
All right.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just one, one quick one. Am I correct in interpreting this chart to say on Table 1, that 71% of the students who took this proficiency examination were below the standard? Am I reading that correctly?
So, so this is, so the, the chart up above has what, NUIA is administered all across the country, and they have what they call a linking studies with state achievement tests. And so I'm using, based on that information that you see in that table, to determine that. We're waiting for the state to actually come up with what our state benchmarks, cut scores are. That's what, you know, they're working on trying to create those so that they're available, and that's what I'll be able to present. But as for right now, this is the best information I can provide until we get those cut scores.
So if we compared nationally, we're, we're below, 71% of our students are below the national standard? I just want to make sure I'm reading that chart right.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the expectation? Was this a surprise, was it expected because COVID, or, I'm curious, what, were you alarmed when you saw these numbers, or does this kind of make sense of what we're seeing nationally because of COVID, et cetera?
It's exactly that. And I was just in a meeting this morning with several district leaders in the state, and we were having this same exact conversation, and how there's even kind of like this, we were hit, you know, pretty hard in our scores, and then it kind of plateaued, and then it seems to have hit again, kind of like it's, I think we're going to see long-term effects from, from, you know, the pandemic over the next several years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody online? Board members online?
I, I think I, I had one before, I was sort of re-looking at the report, but I might, it might be answered here, but you had mentioned an increase in participation rates. And then, but then I think on here, it says we met the requirement for a minimum of 95%.
Yes.
Okay, so what, what usually lends itself to non-participation?
So it's, it's parents that have their students not participating. We do our best to, if a student is out, living illness or is out of school that day, Diane and her team is, is making sure that that student has the makeup test and, you know, is able to take, take the exam. So it's typically because the parents have chosen for them, their child not participating.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And I just want to say that sometimes, you know, it, it can, if it's at a particular grade level, it, and there's a higher number of students, and if that happens to be, you know, those students that, quite frankly, it's typically the higher achieving students that the parent opts out, and that can impact our scores pretty dramatically.
So if that's the case, then this is a lower water level. This is the lower water level of the ROCS exposure, because if we had higher achieving students also taking the tests, this curve would just like.
Did the parent give a reason why they don't want them to take it?
Well, I, I mean, there are various reasons, and there are students that do have anxiety and have, you know, diagnosed anxiety. And so I think, you know, there's some valid reasons that parents do wish to not have their child take the test, and then there might just be philosophical reasons.
Tyler, looks like you have a question?
Yeah, and maybe, maybe I'm incorrect about this, but back when I was here in, you know, mid 2010s, it was mandatory for us all to take these exams. When did that change and why did it change?
It, it hasn't changed where federal and state law requires that, that all students are mandated. We have to, if a student has a significant, you know, intellectual cognitive reason, we, they participate in the alternative state assessment, so those, they're considered, they're participating in that alternative assessment. It's, 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 it's required by law, there's no way around it. But if a parent says they don't want their child to take it, we have, you know, we have to honor that as well, we can't force the kid to take it.
And usually, if it's okay to jump in, Dr. Smith, usually, parents that don't want them to take the test, the child will not be in school that day is usually what happens. So they're pretty much tied, and even if they come back, they will use, the student will usually tell us, Mom, Dad said I'm not taking this test, we'll call and confirm, and it's kind of a done deal at that point. We can't force them to take the test, so. And it's a national kind of trend over the last five years. People are very cognizant of the amount of testing that's happening in classrooms, so there's been a national trend where, or movement to try to do less testing, and I think that's translated to parents making the call themselves to either test or not test. So it feels like, Tyler, some of that has, it's kind of like out of our control, all we can do is work with the ones that are here, so. I think there's various factors, though, I don't think it's just one issue or one particular thing.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you, Dr. Smith. All righty, now we're going to move on to the action items. Approval of the Minutes of September 6, 2023 Board Meeting.
I move we approve Minutes of September 6, 2023 Board Meeting.
Second.
All right, now, discussion. All right, we'll call for a vote.
All righty, Wendy?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yeah.
David G.
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
David? Oh, Scott, I'm sorry, David T is not here. Abigail?
Yes.
Ann Wyatt?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
All right, now we're going to move on to Appointment of First Probationary Contract Teacher Mount Vernon Elementary, Grade 1, Melanie Hall.
I move we appoint, the appointment of first probation, probationary, probationary contract teacher, contract teacher Mount Vernon Elementary, Grade 1, Melanie Hall.
Second.
All right, discussion? See none, call for a vote.
All righty, Wendy?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Abigail?
Yes.
Ann Wyatt?
Yes.
Again, passes unanimously.
Acceptance of Resignation Middle School Teacher Mary Freeman.
I move to accept the resignation of middle school teacher Mary Freeman. Second.
Discussion? All right, we'll call for a vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Annie?
Yep.
Tyler?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Abigail?
Yes.
Ann Wyatt?
Yes.
Again, unanimous.
Acceptance of Resignation Middle School Teacher Mary Gerhart?
I move we accept the resignation of middle school teacher Mary Gerhart.
Second.
All right, ready discussion? See none, call for a vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Abigail?
Yes.
Ann Wyatt?
Yes.
Again, unanimous.
All right, now we'll move on to the information discussion items. First up, we have Board Committee Discussions.
Yes. Sorry. So what we've got listed, and again, this is a draft, if you see a name in blue, those are people that agreed to stay on the same committee. If you see a name in green, that's a person who is interested in that committee. And if you see a name with no highlight and it's crossed out, that's a person that was on the committee and is willing to step down from that committee. So it's just a matter of kind of finalizing this list as we go forward. Curriculum, Patricia has signed up, we do need at least two more people to sign up for that. And looking at policy, we've got four people, we really only need three. And looks like we've got warrants kind of figured out there. At the bottom of the page, Adult Education, Alternative Dropout, and the Health Advisory, those are the numbers that we typically used in the past, doesn't mean we can't change that, but again, yeah, you might want to, I don't know, cage, arm wrestle for the positions, or maybe have still cage badge, I don't know, for membership. It's a joke, guys, laugh. And then again, on the back, you can see vocational is another one that there was a lot of interest typically, we only have one person attend those meetings because they're during the day, they've changed the time this year, so they're right square in the middle of the day. So, having said that.
I don't mind moving from policy to curriculum. Would actually work better for me.
All right. So there's one.
You can take me off of vocational, I think we need one.
Okay.
You can take me off of health advisory. Jay, I have another question.
Sure, of course.
It's not on here, but the, I'm blanking the name. The committee that Kathy and I were both?
Oh, the, is it the?
Blanketing the name.
Sorry, the PDG committee, the?
Yes, the planning.
The, yeah, the evaluation committee, right?
So I wanted to mention that Kathy is no longer on it.
Right.
So it's myself and Rebecca.
Yes.
Do we need another school board?
We should be fine because we're just going to have probably two, grand total of two meetings for maintenance now that all the hard work is done, so.
Okay.
Good question, thank you for bringing that up, I'd forgotten about that.
Yeah, and if you could let me know when the next meeting, I think you might have decided as you were going, like.
So funny, see this right, we need one more per curriculum, and we need two people for the School Health Leadership Council curriculum, I can probably throw me on.
Thank you. And we can always come back and, I say that between Sean and I and Rebecca, we can always reach out to board members individually if maybe they, you know, we can talk it through, so.
Anyone who wants to do the School Health Leadership Council, we don't have anybody, so we need two people, so.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do that, I don't know exactly what the difference is between the health advisory and, I'll learn.
What is the difference on that?
Yeah, I wish I could explain that. It is Sarah Morrell that runs it. One is more focused on the health center piece, and the other one is the advisory board, where they get a variety of input on the health center in terms of the operation and the focus of the health center, so.
So I think now we, we don't need to decide, but I think we've pretty much got coverage.
Yep.
Someone else wants to do that, reach out to Jay and give her a mic.
Who's not here and we'll assign them.
Yeah.
Are we going to say with three people on the document and four people on the conference for that?
Where's the bottom of the blue book page? Oh, because usually it only has one.
Yep.
We do have, we do have a couple members that aren't here to speak up.
Right, right, so.
I can leave it.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can follow up with the people that are interested in, figure that way.
Maybe talk to, talk to Christine and see, because she's on quite a few, so she might be.
Willing to.
Yeah.
Jay, I also found this sheet that helped describe all these committees that were in our last packet, that was super helpful, so if there is one more that like isn't on it, whichever one, Kristin was just?
The budget planning committee.
Oh, yes, I'm on that, okay, so it's not on here, but if it could be a comprehensive list all the time, it also, I think, helps explain the differences between the two committees we were just, you were just asking about.
I, I read it, didn't understand.
That's okay. That way, we always do have this full list, and it even could be easy to publish, so the public understands some of these different committees.
All right, I'm sure you feel comfortable where we're at there?
I agree.
All right, thank you, everybody. Next, we're going to do a review, MSBA Proposed Resolutions.
And that's in the board packet itself. Remember, this is to help Tyler know, because there is some votes that take place, so you're basically discussing these resolutions and how you want Tyler to at that meeting, so keep that in mind as you're going forward, is, this is really for Tyler as he attends that MSBA meeting where they adopt these resolutions, so he needs to know how to vote to represent our, to serve the need.
All right, well, I think what we've done in the past, it's, it may, or help me if you have a better solution, we'll just go down through them and kind of, it's not a formal vote, so just give a thumbs up or thumbs down, although I don't have. Can they do that online? So, yeah, so those of you online, just hit your thumbs up, thumbs down type thing. All right, so the first one is?
A, yeah, those are all the ones that have no changes whatsoever.
So these are like already things that we?
Yes, yeah, they're, they're unchanged from last year.
Okay, so we don't need to go through all of them?
No.
So I think the next one is D, right?
Yep.
So they want to take that out? So they want to take that out completely. It's to do with union, teacher evaluation. Pursues a reason why, doesn't really say why they want to. Unless anyone has any major reason not to take it out, I suggest we take it out. Everybody good with that? The next one is C. This is one they want to add. Well, they want to make a, a change, proposal, revisions to exist or what, they want to add to include transportation equipment. It's to do with career and technical education. That's always a good thing. If you have any comments, everybody good with Tyler supporting that?
Yep.
Alright, sounds good. They want to delete, take out. A resol, well, well, that's all, that's the same one. The next one is to do with staff relations. Sounds like this is a full. Do you want to read, want to read it?
Sean, I do have a question about, like you mentioned a minute ago, understanding why are being proposed.
Yeah, I only have the information that I have.
Where does the information come from then?
That comes from MSBA. They're the ones who put this out. So they have a committee that they work with that's a, like representative group of, um, MSBA administrators, um, that work on this. Um, so there's basically one from each region of the state, and they sit down and work through this. They give us an opportunity to get feedback, and then they bring it to you guys, um, as a full group.
It's basically what they're gonna lobby on for the next year.
Correct.
On behalf of us.
Because it looks like through, through B says it's no longer needed when you get to see what's here to be added, and those that show deleting say above, accepting the above would delete the following. So it looks like somehow in what they're deleting, they maybe recaptured or rephrased or reframed in what they're suggesting to add.
So that's what they're doing here, staff relations. They're replacing. I think makes sense. We've been working to try to get.
Yes.
It's always been a kind of a confusing process to come up with a board on how they do this. I don't have any issues with Tyler supporting that change. Anyone else?
I'm good with it, Dan.
Okay, everybody good? Alright, the next one's about professional development. It's like that one's been around for a while since nine.
See, that's a good one.
They want, they want to delete, they're kind of shorter, really make it longer and add some more substance. See the issues there? Anyone has any issues, we can move on?
Yep.
Alright. Teacher preparation programs, they want to continue to support those and read a bunch of language and kind of tidy it up, it looks like. Does anyone have any issues there? Move along. School district collaboration. That's the next one. I think they want to replace, it was called school choice, I don't know why, maybe that's what it is, but, um, that's what they call it. Now they want to clean it up, I think it makes sense. We can still collaborate, we can still walk through that. Unless, anyone has any issues there, we can move on? So now we get into the new proposed 2023. Nonpartisan school board members. Makes sense. I think that's currently how it's done. I don't know partisan school board races. I mean, with names on the ballot, with the party on the ballot, I don't think that stuff counts. I mean, you obviously will get up and find out, but I think that makes sense. Anyone have any objections to that? Alright.
I think I did some research on that one, um, because I was asked about it, and there's, it doesn't say anywhere in statute that it's nonpartisan, but, um, from what the research I found said that there's only four states that allow for partisan school board or like select board or city council type seat. And Maine was not one of them, was my point.
Oh, yeah. I've never seen, seen a lot of elections.
At the risk of sounding ridiculous, which I'm fine with, this means that there are not seats on the board that are held by particularly, so if an opening occurs, it's not that it's for a Democrat from a town, like, it's not that, because on the ballots, the political designation was on ballots.
Right, like for certain, like if you went to the legislature, you're either Republican
It was, it was for my election. It was on for my election.
It was, it wasn't on our election. It was the, the local committee had it published, had our political affiliations public, but it wasn't on the ballot.
Okay, maybe not. Maybe that's why I saw it. See, told you it was sounding ridiculous.
So, no, so. As opposed to like if you ran for the legislature, your party would have been, or some counties, like the sheriff is, I know Somerset County is not, like, I think it makes sense.
Thanks, Tyler.
Alright, the next one is parental guardian engagement in the education of the children. Don't see any issues with that. Your eyes is not already in there. It kind of seems pretty straightforward. Anyone have any issues with the language there? Anyone have mentioned to Tyler? Alright, we will move on. The next one is state funding to support students' mental and behavioral health. And basically, the Maine School Boards Association, I mean, as it says, they believe that additional funding needs to be allocated to school districts to support. As we've seen, things have been, as their rationale, things have been made worse as a result of COVID. I don't think anyone can argue that. I think it makes sense for Helen to support that, or is there any objections? Alright, we will. Good luck, Tyler. Thanks for representing us for that.
Just very quickly, if it's okay, Sean, in your packets is the MSMA file. We published the email that came out. I wanted to make sure that you guys see it. Um, if you're interested in going, please make sure you, uh, I'm gonna kick this over to Donna, but please make sure you let Donna know, because she'll have a couple of questions for you, just so that way we can make sure we pay, um, you know, for the time that you'll be able to be there. There's a couple of really good meals, and if you're going, we'll pay for them, but if you're not, we don't want to pay for them, you know, that kind of thing. Um, but again, um, everyone's welcome to attend. It's a great conference, uh, great speakers, uh, and the clinics are good. I know there's, uh, there's just kind of a, an outline on the very last page of what some of the clinics are, but once we get you registered and stuff, you'll actually get the, um, full descriptions of what each clinic is actually all about. So I know they're a little ambiguous when you're looking at them. Um, but again, we'd love to have you attend. It's great information, um, a lot of people, and it's a chance to actually connect with other board members from other parts of the state as well. So it's, Wendy's been a couple of times, um, trying to think. Rebecca's been a couple of times as well. Um, so it's a really good, good, Wendy, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, it's a really great learning experience, and if you want to know what's going on in our, um, state with education, this is a great place to go, and everybody's really fun and enthusiastic. The keynote speakers are fantastic. They're not, they're usually from around the nation, they're not just local. So you get an incredible, uh, perspective and great new ideas. I learn so much every time I go. So, um, and it's a fun day. There's a lot to do.
Rebecca, do you want to add anything? I know you've been before as well.
I have actually only participated in, uh, online ones because of COVID, so this is gonna be my first year attending in person, and I'm pretty excited about it, so I may share more at a later date.
So again, if you're interested, have any questions between Donna and myself, we can get you signed up and help navigate the whole process. So just reach out if you're interested. Do you know off the top of your head what the deadline is?
Just somebody believe the fall, like the Friday before, but I'll send an email to everyone that's interested.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. We want to try to avoid late, so, thank you, everyone.
Alright, great, yeah. Looks like the first speaker I've just read, sounds very interesting. Alright, now we're gonna move on to the workshop and board goals. I see in our packet, it's the board goals from last year. We can start there, it's kind of a starting point at most. We'll just kind of go down through it, we can cross stuff out or add stuff, change stuff, start over, however people want, but I think it's a starting point. We can start with the goals from last year and see if they make sense or need updating. Is that work proposed? Perfect. Alright, well, the first one, as you can see, by 2023, the RSU 38 Board of Directors will present a budget with resources that will support the RSU 38 students, faculty, administrative staff, parents, and our community, so they can provide an inclusive and comprehensive educational program that sustains student curiosity and inspires students to be engaged citizens, and foster a safe and supportive learning environment in partnership with community organizations.
I see that's a good one.
Yeah, I would just replace the 23 with the 24 on that one.
Yeah, and then the indicator, I mean, I guess I don't need to read it all. The indicators, I mean, budget approval by the voters of June, like 2024 will indicate the attainment of this goal. Think that still makes sense?
Um, I have a question about 100% participation rate. That's a lot. If you had ever done a survey, it's almost impossible.
Yeah, this is something we kind of, I felt like we spent a lot of, I just want to give a little bit of background, a lot of time on, because you don't want to say 90 per, like, I just want to give background, and I'm open to, like, if you say like, oh, we only want 85%, it's like that, oh, it's not that important. That was kind of the background for updating, you know, you and you.
Yep.
We spent a lot of time on that, so that's kind of why it was like that, but.
I think it was my fault that we spent a lot of time on that, because I kept, I was hung up on the 100% thing too, but it was, it was explained to me over and over again that, that's our goal, is that everyone will participate, and it's a goal, and we, we know that we're not going to attain that.
I think that's why we put the 85% satisfaction down, but we strive, we were gonna strive for 100%, and that's a noble thing.
You rewrote, rewrite it with, with a goal of 100%.
Alright, Wendy had her hand.
Sorry. Why do we need a survey? Why do we need a survey? That's my question. Because it takes people's time to fill out, and, and people don't have a lot of time right now, and how are you gonna get the survey to the people? And the, the survey we had last year had questions for the teachers that were on the survey for the people of the towns, and it didn't make sense to me. Why would we even have a survey?
Because we're trying to get people to participate. I mean, people don't come to the board meetings. I'm just telling you why. That was that way. We held meetings for teachers. The first meeting, people were, it's like any meeting, people were all gung ho and gonna light the world on fire, and then by the third meeting, there was nobody besides myself and Leslie and Jay, maybe a couple of the board members.
And Rebecca, and Annie, and Annie was online. She dropped the cup.
So, you, you gotta get feedback somehow from teachers and parents.
But you, you did it all in this one survey, whereas I would think if you wanted a teacher survey, you could do a teacher survey through the school system much easier. I don't know how the survey would get to all the people in the towns where they would be included, because if you're a parent and you're active, you know what's, you know what's going on, and you have a good idea what's happening on the school board, because people check in at different times. So I thought there was a lot of effort put into getting the survey out, but how many respondents did you have?
I honestly don't remember. Sixty-five?
I think it was, I think we ended up with something like eighty-seven.
For all four towns?
Yeah, hold on.
And the teachers?
Uh, no.
Is this the survey that we put at the town offices and stuff?
Yes, yes. We haven't done anything with it yet. Um, hold on, let me.
And we got eighty?
Go with the survey, I'm just trying to give you background.
Sure, sure.
We had eighty-three responses.
Thank you.
Yep. And it was, uh, broken up with, I can tell you, 33% was parents, um, almost 16% was the community, community members, 20 and a half percent was staff, and, um, and then teachers was 27.7%. So they were, they did, yeah.
People that wanted to do a survey, I'm fine with that. I just, we gotta offer some type of avenue for feedback.
Well, if you want teacher feedback, I, I think that could definitely be taken on, because the communications committee, is that who's responsible for this? I mean, overseeing the survey, I'm guessing, because it's a board member thing, right? It's not a staff thing, correct? Okay, um, I mean, I can, I can see that getting out pretty easily through the, through the system. Um, so for me, that's, that's a no-brainer. I just didn't see a really good correlation between the survey and the people in the community. So that's my two cents, and that's the question. Do we really need a survey for the whole community at this point?
Rebecca?
Uh, yeah, thanks. Um, I agree with Wendy on this one. You all know how, well, most of you know how I feel about surveys. I think they're kind of useless, especially when we get 86 responses out of how many people in all four of our towns. And I'm wondering if maybe we should pump this to the communications committee, so that they can come up with different ways of getting the, the board out, or getting feedback, soliciting feedback to our, from our communities.
I'm fine with that.
I think that's a good idea.
So we're gonna take that, hold that indicator of success up. Tyler, I saw, I see you have your hand up. You take it down?
Yeah, I took it down. Rebecca kind of answered my question.
Okay, that, that's fine. I don't, just getting the budget approved, I think we need to work on that, because. That is our main goal, so perfect. Alright, the next one, as you can see, by June of 2023, in order to provide a unique professional culture that attracts and maintains dynamic staff, the RSU board will consider input from stakeholders reviewing policies, update or add as necessary, support and collaborate with administrators in their work to develop strategies to retain the dynamic RSU 38 staff, including the EAB morale project. actively implement strategies to improve communication with all stakeholders.
Could I ask who the stakeholders are to define it?
Stakeholders would be teachers, students, members of the parents, staff. Everyone as a whole, that's kind of what it was. Someone who was here, I want to correct, he could spend a little bit, but that's kind of, it's, yeah, it's all, everybody. Everyone is our stakeholder, taxpayer, everybody. But Nick, go ahead.
Um, would that also fall under the communications group too? Because they're improving the communications with all stakeholders?
Right, but I mean, I think as a board, these are board goals, we don't want to make it a communications. I mean, I don't know, I'm open, I just think, I mean, we can take, change this any way we'd like. I mean, this is just a starting point, a smoking gun last year.
I guess is what I was saying is the board comes up with suggestions as we go along and the communications people would take it the next step. I guess that's what I meant.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's been the role.
They'd be the people we hand it off to.
Yeah, that's why we started the communications getting back.
Okay, great, thanks.
Spent a lot of time, a lot of meetings. So team, by June of 2024, change that.
So I'll just chime in for a minute. Right, so we're going to continue, part of the district goal is to continue working on staff engagement. We're not really using morale anymore, that was kind of a pandemic, but we want to, it's, it's the same concept, but we definitely want to engage our staff and make them feel valued and make them want to be here. Like, we want people to look at Marana Cook, all of our schools in Marana Cook and go, that's a place I want to be. So that's kind of what we're working towards. And that's not just teachers, that's your, your office staff, that's your custodians, your food service workers right down the line. So as an A-team, that's one of our goals, that we're going to continue to work with EAB, use their process on a yearly basis so that we can kind of establish where our threat areas are, what are the things that are making it difficult for staff members within our school and/or why are they leaving? So like, again, people have asked last year about exit surveys and stuff, so I'm just roughing numbers in. We have 5% of our staff stay this year. And again, that's a rough number, I'm just using numbers off the top of my head, so it may be a little, little higher or a little lower. But basically, we had 37 new staff members that came into our district. That translates to, we have about 250, 260 staff members. That means about 85% of our staff stayed. So again, looking at an indicator of success of 90%, yeah, again, that could be another indicator that we're looking for more people to stay. But I also think we have to tease that out a little bit in terms of, like, you saw resignations letter today. So again, you gotta tease that out, why are people leaving? And, you know, what are those things that we're, and that's what we're trying to figure out at the district as well. But as a board, you guys don't have as much access as like, a lot of the other, like, we do with the surveys, talking with teachers, all that kind of stuff. So just kind of keep that in mind as you're going through. Because I think if you want to keep this, one of the things that I think would be important would be to bring in the human resource director so she can share the hard numbers with you and review exit interviews and all that kind of stuff, which I am gonna agree with something Wendy said, the negotiations committee or the personnel committee is where I think that belongs, those discussions belong. So that way, they can then come back and report to the full board on what are these factors, you know, going forward. So I would just be cautious about setting those indicators quite yet. I do think it's important to stay with, you know, to continue talking about staff engagement. And, but I think your personnel committee can actually kind of help massage us along in terms of kind of ferreting out what are your indicators of success. Because this is the first year we've tried this too, so it's, you know, we're still learning, obviously.
So we would take out the EAB morale project.
Well, we are. I am at the district, at the, at the, the school level, I will be doing that, or at the district level. But I don't know if the board wants to get involved in that at this point. That might not be something that's going to help you guys.
So I would say just change it to spot collaborate with administrators and like, including, just take that out.
And we also go with 90%? Rough it, 91?
I mean, 90%, I mean, we're 85.
We're at 85.
Right, but we always want that little bit extra to.
But I would say keep it, I would say keep it, change it to the 2023. Point four, it's clear to not leave that 90%. It's a little short, but there's a lot of factors in. And then you're saying take out, by March of 2020, take that out?
Yeah.
And take out the survey?
Back to communication.
Yeah, take that back.
I was gonna ask, is this a different survey? Different from the other one, right?
I can't remember, to be honest. So I'd say we just take that out.
I mean, I think last year, there was kind of an effort among us to really go out and get hard data. And I think that was reflective in the goals we set last year, is that we wanted hard data figures to kind of back up and justify what we were doing.
Annie, go ahead.
Um, I was just curious about attrition, not just during the 2022, 23 school year, but previous years, obviously, the landscape was different. We had some major hurdles we were working through, but just so that the 85% figure isn't a standalone figure, how that rates historically with our attrition rate. And Jay, I don't want to put you on the spot, I know you don't have these numbers at the top of your head, but if there's any way to get pre-pandemic what those attrition numbers were, that would be great.
Yep, no, I can definitely get those. And I can just anecdotally let you know that been here five years and this year, the start of this school year was the highest number I've ever seen. During the pandemic, there was hardly any movement at all, and I think that was a product of the pandemic. Very few people were looking to change districts, change locations. Everyone kind of hunkered down and stayed in place. So I think, and this is just my thoughts, that this year in particular, I think it felt normal and people made moves. They were waiting to make moves. And honestly, if you're a teacher, administrator, even superintendent, if you want to make a move closer to home or to other, there's lots and lots of openings right now. So I think a lot of people looked at that and said, you know, hey, I can work in my backyard now, I don't have to travel, or, you know, those kinds of things. So like, there was 26 superintendent changes last year, which is unheard of. Like, that was huge in the superintendent world. And I think we're just seeing that, we're so close to other districts too, it's easy to move. You know, we've got a plethora of, of schools that we, that people can go to close by and it doesn't change their commute or it shortens their commute, quite frankly.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Yep, but I will get those, I'll ask our human resource person to put something together so I can get it to you guys, okay?
So I think taking a lot of that stuff out, it keeps the goals pretty simple. I mean, our number one job is pass a budget. If you don't do that, a lot of problems. And then our number, I feel, is to make it so that everybody feels welcome to communicate with the board.
Have you been keeping a note about the things that the communications committee is gonna talk about at their meeting?
Yep, I got them.
Thank you.
Should one of our goals be getting those metrics that we reviewed at the top of the program improved with student education? I mean, I always thought that purpose of the school board is to make sure we had successful future neighbors, citizens, you know, and I just, being new to the board, I'm surprised not to see that. So we have a budget, it's a car amount, everything runs on money. And we want to make sure we take care of the people that take care of our kids every day. But should we have a third goal to say we want our, I mean, it almost goes without saying. So I don't know how that's been done in the past. That's why I'm putting it out there, so.
Second motion, I'm sorry.
I, I like that. I mean, we don't need to finalize this tonight, but basically, improving students' score, you know.
Yeah, some extent, you know, some sort of a steady improvement in student metrics or, or what have you. Doesn't need to be specific, but it feels like it's because the whole organization is about education. The piece that's missing is the kids we're trying to educate. That's all. And it just, and I don't know if, again, it's just embedded and it goes without saying. But that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. Is it okay, Sean, if I jump in just for a second?
I just want to add, I, I think it's important we include that, because I think that gets lost.
So just so you guys know, A-team, the administrative team did set a goal around student achievement and engagement. And it was basically what Brian just said. And one of the things that, going back to last year, that you guys had talked to me about was the idea of getting back to achievement and growth for students. So that's one of the reasons why we effectively made that goal, was to kind of bring it back to the surface and say, this is what we are about, here's our goal. So, I mean, I can share that with you guys, if it's helpful to kind of see, how can we craft that, a similar message at the board level? I can send it to you guys, you guys can kind of look at it, kind of figure it out and what does it mean as far as the board level goes.
We used to have something that said, in student success in all endeavors or in all, whatever the students wanted, because it's more than just success with the scores, which is very important, but also the others, the other things that students do here to succeed. So I know that was something a few years ago that was in, do you remember that, Sean?
Oh, yes.
To the extent that our, our board goal for that mirrors those goals that management in the school, I mean, and when I say management, I mean Jay and his team, that those are mirrored or interlinked, I think that sends a pretty strong message to the folks that work for Jay Admin. So that they say, yeah, we're paying attention, we care about it too. And not, not only do we care, but it's one of our priorities.
So I think we can start with Jay setting that language around and then slow walks off or throw a suggestion out there and help incorporate that into this.
I mean, just saying academic improvement and showing that if we put this on our goals, I mean, there's two goals, we add a third goal. That shows how important it is. And I think we're all on the same page. And you said that, you literally took the words out of my mouth. I was gonna say, like, this, we need to, like, this, it needs to be a goal. I mean, and we need to make sure that everybody's on the same page and we're all very reflecting because, you know, we're talking about this is our 2024 goal. Reiterate.
So I see another hand up.
All that. But on top of that, though, I, if we can't measure some of what we do, then we can't tell how we're doing and whether we have improved. So while there's been some discussion about surveys or removing these, I don't think, you still have to have some repetition to improve anything. So even if a survey this year didn't get us the type of participation, that wouldn't be unusual for a first-time survey to not necessarily get high participation. If folks can't predict or there's any prediction that there will be one that comes, there's some predictability to when some access or some information is shared so that folks can engage. I don't think it's a reason not to do something. It may be a reason to look at something different. But we definitely can't stop being creative with trying to reach out and offer different ways for folks to engage. Some folks are comfortable in person, some folks are comfortable anonymously, some folks struggle with access, it's, it's all those things. But we can't be looking at asking people to vote for a budget when we don't educate them on what the budget entails as we are creative and innovative and scrutinous and making that responsibly, but that trickles to those two others. Who then drives the achievement of our students and success of our students for whatever that looks like to each one? And then our scores, even if it does feel like, it can be a struggle for those scores to feel like they are super personally accurate or always right on point. They can't be completely off for all kids all the time either. Everybody's still taking the same tests. It's still something to use year over year, what that looks like. And the moment some things change, you, you break finding trends, but that's not a reason to not change either. So I just say, I don't think we should stop being creative, trying to connect with the community and stakeholders. We just may need to do it different. I know, I think last year with some of the surveys, people could fill surveys out multiple times. I think Wendy brought up maybe where there might have been some cross-pollination of the right questions for right people. Like, that's all just a place to figure out and find ways to improve sometimes also.
Yeah, I think there's some challenges for the communications, Kay, because one of the reasons, I mean, I'm not a big survey get person, but I've been to a lot of meetings in this district over the last 10 years, and a handful of people dominate those conversations. Because some people are new teachers or new staff members or new in the community and they're not comfortable. And, you know, I'll get up in front of a crowd, I'm about, I don't, it doesn't amaze me what anyone thinks. But some people are very nervous, some people think their job's on the line if they speak up. I've heard that. Whether it's true or not, I've heard that from teachers in this district multiple times. I've heard it here already. So everyone's different. So I want everyone to feel comfortable to have a voice. And, I mean, it could be a text survey, you can do them cheaply, it could be a man, I mean, there's, everyone's comfortable, but I think you're, you're spot on. We need, because, you know, surveys might not show, but if you see a trend that 100 people say they don't feel like they're being listened to, well, then there might be an issue. I think that's a challenge for the communications committee that work on creative ways to get. I don't mean to butt in, it's just, we've got to find ways to get feedback. Because I, I feel like there was, you get feedback when the world's on fire and people are angry and that's kind of, teachers didn't like the communications policy, so probably 30 teacher, staff members showed up and then we changed the communications policy so they felt comfortable talking to the board. And then by meeting three, nobody came. But we still have a lot of work to do. We always have, there's always work to do as a district, we can't stay stagnant.
Right. And so when that happens, by meeting three and nobody comes, you don't go, well, that didn't work.
No, that's what I'm saying.
You go, why? And then it's a new conversation about why. Why did you come and then not come? You know, whatever that looks like.
That's a really good point. And I, and I think that's something that the communications committee really is working on and trying to figure out ways to communicate with our, all of our stakeholders, community members, people that do have kids, who don't have kids in the school district, just everybody. And that, that is something, I mean, I don't think we've met yet this, this year, but it's, it's definitely something that's, that's on our radar.
Maybe going to them, to some of these groups, instead of asking them to come to us or fill out a survey. I mean, we fill out lots, lots of surveys, but going to them, say the senior cafe or the aging in place group or trying to get to where they are. Just an idea.
I was gonna mention exactly the senior cafe, because it's a way that you can get to them. And if somebody's got some time in the day, they go and sit there and talk to a group of folks who get out of the house and want to listen to presentations by the kids. And in the meantime, there's somebody from the board there and says, this has been bothering me, why don't you guys talk? I think you would get a lot of engagement. Like, that just requires a lot of effort on our part individually to try to make additional time for those sorts of trends. But it does make sense, a listening session of some kind, it's very informal and friendly. People don't feel like they're on the spot.
And they feel included. I think they feel included that way too. Yeah, the informals is good. Not that you wouldn't have questions or, but.
No, I think these are all great, great things. My communication is always a challenge, I feel, since I've been on this board or any board. I feel like you hear from people when the world's on fire, and then, yes, tonight, there'll be people besides Karen, and a lot of the board members, and Diane. Like, I don't want to say nobody, but really, it's a small turnout. And I think the other thing we need to do a better job of when it comes to communication is explaining to communication how, how communication should work. An example, I'll, we can use, these are real-life examples, like, because the water fountain at Reed Field Elementary is broken, I don't need to know about that. Have you talked to Mr. Boston? Well, no, well, why haven't, you know, called Mr. Boston, that really happened, and it's a real, I could go on. But I think we need to somehow do a better job of educating parents and teachers of the line of command, and how things can get done. They really, those things should be the last things we hear about, when those things happen. I know people on this board have gotten calls, like Dr. Mull, a number of people on this board, like, what are we gonna do about this? Nothing. Have they talked to their, the classroom teacher? Have they talked to the principal? And nine times out of ten, the answer's true.
Yeah, line of command.
So I think we need to somehow, the communicate, I'd like to put that on the communication agenda too, of how we get that out, because I feel like this year, for whatever reason, this board has dealt with a lot of stuff there, or gotten a lot of calls, and some of the board members who have called me, like, what are we gonna do? And the answer, pretty much, I'll, I'd say, ten times out of ten has been, I haven't heard back on those issues, because they get resolved.
I definitely think educating people on what we do as a school board is honestly, helps people say, oh, you're on the school board, oh, what do you do? You know, and they'll, they'll ask about, someone mentioned something to me about, again, like, your child in the classroom. And it's like, well, no, it's not on the first, but I think somehow educating, I don't know if we'd be sending something out, again, another.
I think, uh, we had a flyer we had printed, I thought was really well-done, I think Rebecca did it. I think we can update that, Rebecca, I don't want to give you a job to do, but.
I already updated it, Sean.
So we can start putting those around and sharing those at all our board meetings. Or if people want to hold, like, the senior cafe, you can give that, give those out, I thought they were really professionally done. So back to the goals, kind of, I know that could get off in the communications, but. Yep, all right, Annie, go ahead.
Just real quick, so as the communications, um, committee member, just a little background, we did have some of these seeds planted last year. I believe it was in the second forum in January, in terms of having a more informal outlet. And I think it's really important that we not just sort of talk the talk, but that we really follow through and see these ideas through to fruition, because there was, um, excitement about having, you know, maybe some of us would come during lunch or something along those avenues, similar to senior cafe. So I think if we can really follow through this year on some of those, um, might just lend some credibility to our mission and, um, just be good for the community, so, that's all.
Yeah, no, I think that's great, I think.
Um, just before we straight back off this, um, can I permission to ask Diane how many people might be online? How many people are on through Zoom, Diane? And three are board members?
Four.
In addition to, okay, so four. And, and I've been coming to meetings, this is the fewest people I've seen in this room even. So, I'm, hopefully, people just go back and watch this session always on YouTube, when it becomes available, because I do know people that do. So I won't be overly discouraged by what I don't see, because it's also a soccer game down there right now, and all over the place, right? So I, from just my own standpoint of, we just talked about trying to engage with community members and try and educate them on the best way to solve problems or see them through. I think folks' frustration comes from feeling like they might say something to someone and they don't feel like something gets done. This is not a school problem, this is a business problem. But the point would be, sometimes it's to the wrong resource. Sometimes it's to a resource that doesn't then clarify, they're not going to solve the problem for them. I don't want folks to be discouraged and hearing when they, all, the whole community's gonna watch this back on YouTube and we just won't know, because we won't have any metrics. But doesn't believe they shouldn't still talk to school board members, because us educating the public on how to reach out or speak up or ask questions to the right people to solve problems is no different than the school board should hear from people to understand any sort of trending concern that just floats around, even if we're not going to solve it on the spot, and we do redirect people. It is good that folks still talk to us about things, I would hope that folks don't stop talking to us about things, but I would hope we start getting contacted by people saying, you know what, I did have this thing, and I did talk to you about it, Kristen, and I did what you said, and you know what, it got taken care of, and I appreciate that. You know, those are the things I hope we can hear about, so we still understand the trend of how the district is still working and working together and solving problems and engaging the community.
No, I, I think that makes sense, I'm not suggesting people stop.
And I didn't think you were, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I know, I'm saying, I think people let things build up, and they had a quick conversation, I think, along with this.
Agree.
Yeah.
Um, so when it comes now to bring us back to what we're, the, the goals, I think we will, Jay's gonna send that around, and people can offer suggestions, and then we'll have time to have a cleaned-up copy for next quarter.
Yep.
Plus, anyone has anything else? Andrew?